Welcome to your town meeting. The town clerk informed me that we have a quorum. We've met the quorum of 50 people. With 50 people present at the last count, I declare the 2017 special town meeting now in session. To honor the work that our service members do for our country every day, our invocation will be read by Long Meadow resident, former middle school social studies teacher, and World War II United States Navy veteran Saul Finestone, who is also a recent celebrant of his 91st birthday.[35.29][35.29](APPLAUSE)
We have come together in civil assembly as a community in a tradition that is older than our Commonwealth itself. We come together to make decisions about our community. As we deliberate, let us advocate for our positions, but not at the expense of others. Let us remember that there is an immense gap between saying "I am right" and saying[76.84][76.84]"I believe I am right," and that our neighbors with whom we disagree are good people with hopes and dreams as true and as high as ours. And let us always remember that, in the end, caring for each other in this community is of far greater importance than any difference we may have.[101.47][101.47](APPLAUSE)
Long Meadow High School student and LHS senior Garnet Welch, who is a Girl Scout Cadet Silver Award winner and selected for the Art Allstate Massachusetts, will now lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Garnet?[123.64][123.64](GARNET) I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the
republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you please remain standing and offer a moment of silence, both to remember and honor veterans who have sacrificed for our country and all those who are hurting? Thank you all for coming. I welcome you to your own town meeting, our town's legislative body. I am the moderator. To any first-time voters or visitors, I offer a special welcome. I have some general housekeeping items, rules of procedure, before we get to the discussion of warrant articles. First, some important safety information. The fire marshal has informed me that in the event of a fire alarm or other emergency, exits are clearly marked. Those of us in the back of the gym over here, to my left, will go to the exit at the back and then turn left and exit through the cafeteria. At the back of the gym on my right, turn right and exit through the main entrance. Forgive me, those of us in the front of the gym, go to the front of the gym and turn right and exit. The front of the gym on the right, go to the front of the gym exit and turn left and exit the doors via the pool. Should you need a hearing assistive device, inform a teller, or counter, or someone at the clerk's desk, and we shall loan one of them to you. The back of the warrant includes a general list of rules of procedure that we will follow. These rules of procedure follow the Massachusetts general laws, the town charter, our bylaws, and a book called Town Meeting Time that provides the rules for town meetings. Warrant articles are general warnings to the town about what will be discussed, but we don't actually vote on the articles. We vote on the motions under the article. We take a motion to take some action or not take some action. And the oral motion, the one that is said, may be different than what is printed in the warrant. In order to speak, please wait for recognition from the moderator, then state your name and address. All remarks must be addressed to the moderator. And there are three microphones that you see in the middle of the gymnasium, and a center microphone for elected or appointed board members speaking on behalf of the board or lead citizen petitioners. You see that the microphones in the center are marked with green, yellow, and red. If you are in favor of the motion, go to the green microphone. If you have a question or you want to make another motion, go to the yellow microphone. If you are opposed to the motion, go to the red-marked microphone. And we will alternate among all of these. There's no cross-examination. If you have multiple questions, please ask them all at once as per our bylaws. If you wish to speak, just line up at the microphone and I'll alternate. And if there's somebody who wishes to speak often, I will try to give preference to those who have not spoken. All deliberation involves sharing of relevant, accurate information, weighing advantages and disadvantages, and should end when there's no new information available, so kindly be brief, be clear, be relevant, and of course, be civil. Should speeches wander from their point or become repetitive, I will interrupt and encourage the speaker to come to the point. Motions to limit or extend debate require a two-thirds majority, and our bylaws require that if anybody wants to stop debate, they can only move to do so after at least five have spoken in favor and five have spoken against. The presumption is that these speakers are from the floor, not the main mover of a motion. All visitors must sit in the designated section. Credentialed media and non-voter employees are sitting in the first section bleacher row and first row on the floor to my left. Well, there's nobody there yet, but they will be. So the rules of procedure allow some kinds of talk and prohibit others. And of course, we're in a gymnasium, yet we will not cheer nor we will jeer. And should there be a need to call the speaker to order, I will do that, and you will be directed to come to order. You should note that Town Meeting Time does indicate that should a participant not come to order, the moderator shall request the person to withdraw from the meeting and direct a police officer to escort the person out of the building. And let's hope that's not necessary. When we come to a vote, I will ask you to raise your green voting cards. Please raise them until instructed to lower them. And we have about five articles for whom motions will require a two-thirds majority and one requiring a nine-tenths. I'll inform you of what's required at each vote. Should there be a need for a hand count, we have tellers who will act in pairs, counting each of the eight sections. And new this year, for this meeting, we are fortunate to have two seniors in high school, a girl scout and a boy scout no less, who will assist us in counting votes. This is done in other towns as well, and so I was really thrilled when they were willing to step up and do their civic duty to help us in counting. And I urge you to give them reasons to keep their interest in town governments and willingness to serve the public good. We have 19 articles on the warrant, and with your patience, goodwill, brevity of speech, and careful listening, we'll finish at a decent hour. I shall now turn to Tom LaCusa for Article Number One.[481.00][481.00](TOM LACAUSA) Okay, Article Number One.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate $126,900 from the fiscal year 2018 Community Preservation Fund revenues for CPA Fund Balance Reserve for open space of $42,300, CPA Fund Balance Reserve for community housing of $42,300, and CPA Fund Balance Reserve for Historic Preservation of $42,300.[532.88][532.88]([S01] Is there a second?
There's a second? You may speak to it, Mr. LaCusa.[537.16][537.16](TOM LACAUSA) Okay.
The Community Preservation Act, CPA, requires the town meeting to appropriate or reserve for future appropriation at least 10% of the estimated annual CPA revenue for acquisition and initiatives for each of the following three categories: open space, community housing, and historic preservation. Approval of this article will satisfy the requirement for fiscal year 2018. Currently, the fiscal year '18 state matching share is estimated 15% of our current year's estimated revenues, surcharge of $360,000, and other miscellaneous revenues of $9,000, and state match of $54,000. And this article is recommended by the Finance Committee.[590.16][590.16]([S01] Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Seeing none, then we'll come directly to a vote. This requires majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your green cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your green cards. The motion passes with a unanimous affirmative vote. Article Two.[622.54][622.54](TOM LACAUSA) Article Two.
I move that the town vote to transfer from the water retained earnings account the sum of $108,163.40 for the purpose of paying prior-year bills. As a result of the unusually dry fiscal year 2017 year from July 1st, 2016 to June 30th, 2017, the town purchased more than the budgeted volume of water from the city of Springfield. As a result of the water usage, the town's water revenues for fiscal year 2017 exceeded the budgetary estimates by more than $500,000. As part of the fiscal year 2017 closing process, the revenues are now in the water retained earnings account and need to be appropriated to pay for the extra water purchased from the city of Springfield. And this is recommended by the Finance Committee and needs a nine-tenths vote required.[688.06][688.06]([S01] Is there a second?
Motion's been made and seconded. Mr. LaCusa, I believe you already spoke to it. So, if the Finance Committee recommends it, is there anybody else who wishes to speak? All right. Although this requires a nine-tenths vote, a unanimous vote obviously makes it a whole lot easier to determine. So all those in favor, please raise your green cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your green cards. The motion passes with a unanimous affirmative vote, declaration, unanimous affirmative Article Three.[742.13][742.13](TOM LACAUSA) Article Three.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $30,000 for the purposes of providing supplemental funding to the fiscal year 2018 budget for Law Department legal expenses.[756.88][756.88]([S01] Is there a second?
Motion's been made and seconded, you may speak to it.[760.88][760.88](TOM LACAUSA) Nearly $30,000 of the $50,000 budgeted for the legal expenses has been spent within
the first quarter of fiscal year 2018. The expenses incurred have mainly been attributable to representing the town in zoning and health department-related matters. The supplemental appropriation will mitigate any potential account deficit at fiscal year-end, and this is recommended by the Finance Committee.[787.73][787.73]([S01] Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
Then we'll come directly to a vote. This requires a majority vote. Would all those in favor, please raise your green cards? Thank you. Would all those opposed, please raise your green cards? Thank you. The motion passes by majority affirmative vote. Article Four, Mr. LaCusa.[821.13][821.13](TOM LACAUSA) Okay.
I move that the town raise to, or vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $29,373 for the purpose of providing supplemental funding to the fiscal year 2018 budget for interest on short-term debt.[837.61][837.61]([S01] Is there a second?
Thank you. You may speak to it.[843.69][843.69](TOM LACAUSA) As part of the $21,000, or $21,205,000 DPW project, the town purchased
the former tennis facility on Dwight Road and financed the purchase through the issuance of a bond anticipation note. The $29,273 of interest on the band for the purpose of this facility will be due in May And this article is recommended by the Finance Committee.[877.63][877.63]([S01] Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
Seeing none, we'll come directly to a vote. This requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your green cards? Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your green cards? Thank you. This motion passes by majority affirmative vote. Article Five, Mr. LaCusa.[907.13][907.13](TOM LACAUSA) I move that the town vote to transfer from the DPW Reserve for damages
account the sum of $62,92 from the Capital Stabilization Fund, the sum of $56,485[925.88][925.88]([S01] from the sewer retained...[927.38][927.38]([S01] Excuse me?
Is that number accurate?[930.88][930.88](TOM LACAUSA) The sum of $56,458.[937.51][937.51]([S01] Thank you.[938.51][938.51](TOM LACAUSA) From the sewer retained earnings, the sum of $28,225 from the water retained
earnings, and the sum of $28,225 for the purpose of purchasing a dump truck with a plow.[954.63][954.63]([S01] Is there a second?
Motion's been made and seconded. This requires a two-thirds vote in the case of transfer from stabilization fund? Mr. Garrett?[966.32][966.32](GARRITT) A deep...[967.32][967.32]([S01] Oh, I'm sorry. Had you, you hadn't spoken to it yet, forgive me.[971.63][971.63](GARRITT) Yeah, I haven't spoken to it yet.[973.38][973.38]([S01] Forgive me, I'm sorry. Mr. Garrett? Wait a second.[976.38][976.38](GARRITT) You're in line, good.
Okay. A DPW 2007 international dump truck with a plow, $33,000 GVW, was lost in an accident last March. The town received $62,092 from insurance settlement. The total appropriation of $175,000 will allow the DPW to purchase a heavy-duty dump truck as a replacement for the one totaled in the accident. The size of the truck and the new $175,000 purchase price listed is a reduction from the October 16th original request of $225,000. The vehicle is currently available and complies with the town's fleet management study. And I believe we're going to hear from the Finance Committee.[1030.32][1030.32]([S01] Mr. Garrett?[1032.82][1032.82](GARRITT) Yes, the original recommendation from the Finance Committee was not to recommend this article. Since that time, we've received additional information from the town manager as well as representatives of the Department of Public Works, and the Finance Committee has voted to change its recommendation to, in fact, recommend this article. The reason that we originally did not recommend the article is because the information that we received was that the purchase did not run through planning, excuse me, through capital planning. It's a capital item, and they're purchased according to a schedule, and the Finance Committee felt that that process had been skipped over. But after hearing from the Department of Public Works about the urgent need for the vehicle as well as the, I guess, backup plan, if the vehicle was not purchased, that they would have to rent an undersized vehicle to clear the longer streets like Long Meadow Street, the Finance Committee reconsidered and voted again to, the Finance Committee now does recommend Article Five.[1106.58][1106.58]([S01] Is there anyone who wishes to speak on this?
Name and address?[1112.83][1112.83](MARCOS) Chair, just a point of information.[1114.23][1114.23]([S01] Name and address first?[1115.58][1115.58](MARCOS) Oh, Armin Ray, 19 Longfellow Drive.[1117.58][1117.58]([S01] Yep.[1118.58][1118.58](MARCOS) Seeing as the minutes haven't been posted for the Finance Committee yet, can
we have what the vote was on that motion?[1124.63][1124.63]([S01] Mr. Garrett, do you have that information?[1134.73][1134.73](GARRITT) The, I have in my notes here that the original vote for this article was zero to six against when the Finance Committee originally voted.[1148.83][1148.83]([S01] Yeah, I believe the question was about now?
The...[1152.08][1152.08](GARRITT) Oh, the revote was unanimous in favor.[1154.58][1154.58]([S01] Thank you. Any other, anybody else who wants us to speak? Then we shall come directly to a vote. And again, this requires a two-thirds vote. Would all those in favor, please raise your green cards? Thank you. Would all those opposed, please raise your green cards? Thank you. The motion passes by majority, Declaration, two-thirds majority affirmative vote. Article Six, Mr. Lowe.[1202.42][1202.42](MARCOS) I move that the town vote to transfer from available funds in the Treasury $265,000
to the operating stabilization fund.[1213.65][1213.65]([S01] Is there a second?[1214.65][1214.65](MARCOS) Second.[1215.65][1215.65]([S01] Motion's been made and seconded, you may speak to it, Mr. Lowe.[1217.98][1217.98](MARCOS) Per policy of the Select Board, all free cash amounts in excess of $500,000, once the town's fiscal year budget is balanced and related financial matters covered, shall be transferred into the town's operational stabilization fund established by vote of Town Meeting on November 18, 2003 pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40, Section 5B. This is recommended by the Finance Committee.[1245.15][1245.15]([S01] Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on it?
Then we shall come directly to a vote. This requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your green cards? Thank you. Would all those opposed, please raise your green cards? Thank you. The motion passes by unanimous affirmative vote. Article Seven.[1274.83][1274.83](MARCOS) I move that the town vote to transfer from the ambulance fund $130,000 and from
available funds in the Treasury the sum of $130,000 for the purchase and equipping a new ambulance to replace the 2005 Medic One ambulance, with such funds to be paid back to the general fund by fiscal year 2020.[1296.15][1296.15]([S01] Is there a second?[1297.33][1297.33](MARCOS) Second.[1298.33][1298.33]([S01] Motion's been made and seconded, you may speak to it, Mr. Lowe.[1300.92][1300.92](MARCOS) The ambulance fund currently has $171,000 in it. However, because of a long, of a lag time it takes from the time an ambulance is ordered until the time it is delivered, an appropriation is needed now with a general fund subsidy to replace the 2005 Medic One ambulance, which currently has 126,243 miles and 9,228 hours, as of 9/15/17, active runtime. The Fire Department utilizes both ambulances simultaneously when possible, and the increase of two firefighters in the fiscal year 2018 budget will allot additional time when both will be utilized simultaneously, which correlates with additional revenue earned. The ambulance fund would repay the general fund with any balance in excess of $50,000 at fiscal year-end. It is estimated that this would take one to two years. This is not recommended by the Finance Committee.[1359.15][1359.15]([S01] Thank you, Mr. Lowe.
There's another speaker? Mr. Garrett?[1363.03][1363.03](GARRITT) You'll see in your warrant that this article was originally not recommended
by the Finance Committee. However, after meeting with the fire chief and the town manager, the Finance Committee voted to change its recommendation to recommend this article. The reason that the Finance Committee originally voted not to recommend the article was because the ambulance generates revenue, and those revenues are put aside so that these types of purchases can be made directly from that. And the Finance Committee position was that rather than borrow the money from the town to be paid back later, that the ambulance would be able to use the ambulance revenue to pay for the vehicle. However, after meeting with the fire chief, he has assured us that, he anticipates that the revenue that's going to be generated over the next year is in fact going to be or nearly sufficient to cover the cost of this ambulance, and ordering it early would avoid being placed in the position of having a safety issue arise where we have an unreliable ambulance in the role. So, based on that, the Finance Committee reconsidered and voted again to approve recommendation of Article Eight.[1448.86][1448.86]([S01] Seven.[1449.86][1449.86](MARCOS) Oh, excuse me, of Article Seven. Just in anticipation of the question, the original Finance Committee vote was three to four against, and the recommendation to reconsider and to recommend this article was unanimous.[1472.65][1472.65]([S01] Is there anybody who wishes to speak on this?
Okay, this requires a majority vote. Would all those in favor, please raise your green cards? Thank you. Would all those opposed, please raise your green cards? Thank you. This passes by unanimous affirmative vote. Article Eight, Mr. Lowe.[1505.83][1505.83](MARCOS) I move that the town vote to transfer from available funds in the Treasury the
sum of $35,000 for the purpose of purchasing and equipping a police vehicle.[1516.83][1516.83]([S01] Is there a second?[1518.15][1518.15](MARCOS) Second.[1519.15][1519.15]([S01] Motion's been made and seconded, you may speak to it, Mr. Lowe.[1521.76][1521.76](MARCOS) The town budgeted for two police vehicles within the fiscal year 2018 operating budget passed at the annual town meeting in May 2017. High mileage and cost of repairs are accelerating the need for an additional replacement to the police fleet.[1540.03][1540.03]([S01] Thank you.
Mr. Garrett?[1546.15][1546.15](GARRITT) You will notice in your article that the Finance Committee did not recommend
this article. Since that time, the Finance Committee has met with the police chief as well as the town manager and gotten additional information on this, and now the Finance Committee is recommending this article. The reason the Finance Committee originally did not recommend the article is that we didn't receive what we felt was sufficient information to approve the article, other than the notation that the mileage was high and that there was high maintenance. The Finance Committee didn't feel that that was sufficient information to approve the expenditure. However, subsequently, after meeting with the police chief and the town manager, one of the things that we've been made aware of is that the vehicles that are currently in use have been actually been stretched beyond what their anticipated mileage was supposed to be. I believe the figure was 15,000 or so miles beyond, as well as the police vehicles' schedule of being, of replacing two vehicles and then three vehicles and then two vehicles was interrupted, and they were only able to get one vehicle when they were, when they should have, according to the schedule that they're on, received more. So, that is the reason that this new vehicle is now being requested. And so, based on that information, the Finance Committee voted again to reconsider Article Eight and elected to approve it. The original vote for Article Eight was three, four against, and the reconsideration was unanimous to approve.[1653.03][1653.03]([S01] Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Then we'll come directly to a vote. This requires a majority vote. Would all those in favor, please raise your green cards? Thank you. Would all those opposed, please raise your green cards? The motion passes by majority affirmative vote. Article Nine.[1683.92][1683.92](MARCOS) I move that the town vote to transfer from available funds from water retained
earnings the sum of $20,000 for the purpose of replenishing the water reserve account within the fiscal year 2018 budget.[1696.83][1696.83]([S01] Is there a second?[1698.42][1698.42](MARCOS) Second.[1699.42][1699.42]([S01] Thank you.
Motion's been made and seconded, you may speak to it.[1702.33][1702.33](MARCOS) The town budgeted $40,000 in a water reserve account within the fiscal year
2018, operating water department budget passed at the May 2017 annual town meeting. The account is used to fund extraordinary and unforeseen budgetary needs. Emergency repairs to a water main break on Ely Road required the water department to utilize $20,000 from the reserve account. This appropriation will replenish the account in case additional funding is required during fiscal year 2018. Any unused appropriation will revert back to water retained earnings.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to this? Seeing none, we'll come directly to a vote. This requires a majority vote. Would all those in favor, please raise your green cards? Thank you. Would all those opposed, please raise your green cards? The motion passes by majority affirmative vote. Article Ten, Mr. Lowe.[1775.83][1775.83](MARCOS) I move that the town vote to accept the provisions of Massachusetts General Law,
Chapter 40, Section 3, with the additional provisions allowed by the statute to have any balance remaining in the cell phone rental account at the close of a fiscal year remain in the account and may be expended for the upkeep and maintenance of any facility under the control... the control of the Department of Public Works.
Is there a second? Motion's been made and seconded, you may speak to it, Mr. Lowe.
Acceptance of this statute is intended to designate for the lease rental income received by the town from the lease rental of space for a cell tower located adjacent to the Blinn, the Blinn tennis courts, to be used specifically for the maintenance of town properties and facilities, inclusive of school and parks and recreation grounds.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to it? You, question? Yep.
Some of us were just a little, oh, sorry, Jess Hutchins, one twenty-eight Hilltop Road. Some of us were talking today in town, we're just a little confused about this article, and I wanted to ask, have we already approved putting in a cell tower? And this is just clarifying the terms of the lease rental income? Could, could you maybe speak to a little bit more detail about that?
Thank you. Mr. Crane?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. The town did enter into a lease for a small portion of land next to the Blinn tennis courts, as though, for those of you go to football games where the ticket booth is on the Bliss roadside, a small, very small area there where the, where the plan is to install a hundred and fifty-foot cell tower. Um, the, the primary reason is that cell service in the center of town i- is poor, and we've received many complaints over the years about that, and we bid out the opportunity for that location. We did get a successful bid from a cell tower company. Uh, before the cell towers project is finalized, we did sign a lease with them, but that is subject to local permitting, and so it has not gone through that process yet.
Do you have a follow-up question?
I do, thank you, Madam Moderator. My follow-up question is, has anyone in town done any investigation with regard to, um, EMF radiation and cell towers?
The, uh, have we done an investigation on it? Uh, no, um, but we have been engaged with cell tower companies and, and I guess some research, but not like scientific research, but we've been, been engaged with cell towers for the site for several years, and I, I think they're, um, I mean, I guess people run their cell phones all the time, so then the, the radiation's already passing through the air we're standing in right now.
Right, I, I don't.
Ms. Hutchins?
I don't know the answer.
Is this a question?
Yes. I don't know the answer to the question I'm asking. I, it was my hope that we as a community might be able to get possibly some more information before moving ahead with the installation of a cell, cell tower, so, um, that was just my sort of open-ended question in terms of how we could get good information with regard to radiation in our community. Again, I don't have the answer to that question, but.
Okay, I think that, uh, for those who are interested in that, um, there will, I think there'll be minimally a zoning board of appeals hearing, and they'll be able to attend that and ask the, uh, proponent directly. For reference purposes, the town has two other cell towers already in the community, one over on, uh, there's, the water tower has, uh, multiple cell antennas on it, and then on Ponceide Road next to DPW, we have a large cell tower. Uh, like I said, the town, so the purpose of the article is to generate revenues, and we want to have those revenues set aside to, uh, improve our grounds, our facilities, our playing fields, our parks, uh, because those are the areas of the budget that are always under great strain. Uh, so that was the, that was the intent of the article.
Yes, ma'am, you have a question? State your name and address, please.
Carolyn Slus, one oh three Warren Terrace. I would like to, um, advocate for what the prior speaker said about the radiation electromagnetism. Uh, cell phones have to be turned off in hospital areas.
Could you speak into the microphone, please?
Well, I would if it was lower.
Could, could, could somebody assist her with that? Would one of the?
Or if I were taller. Anyway, um, I assume the cell tower will look like the Eiffel Tower, maybe? It's a hundred and fifty feet tall in proportion to the surrounding areas, but I am mostly concerned about the radiation. As the gentleman who just, thank you, done your good deed for the day, now you can be a rascal. As the, as the prior gentleman just said about, um, it's going through the air as we speak, well, there's a case in point. I think it really, further considerations should be done, especially since it's going to be near the tennis courts, I understand, is it the Bliss Road Park where children play, et cetera, et cetera.
Is it, do you, if you have any other questions, you can ask them now? Mr. Crane, do you want to answer that?
Exact location?
Exact location is, um, if you look at the north side of the tennis courts, right, right up against the, the fence, there's currently a grove of pine trees.
Is this near Bliss Park?
No, the Blinn tennis courts. They're the high school.
They're the high school?
Yeah.
Okay. So you still have young people in the vicinity, so I think it's, uh...
I would urge you to come to your point, and if you have, if you have.
Okay, I think it, I agree with the former speaker that it should be looked into more closely, especially with electromagnetic waves. Even a toaster oven can be dangerous. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Name and address, please.
Timothy Casey. I have the exact opposite problem. Seven forty-one Laurel Street. And I would like to speak in favor of this proposal because I'm, I'm a football referee, and I have run down that football field and a massive divot in the hash mark going from the thirty-yard line all the way down to the end zone is quite frankly, an embarrassment for a town that has such wonderful natural resources and such a great football program, and so many other good athletic programs. And I do appreciate the concern for, uh, radiation, and, and, and I, I think that is important, but I think that this cell tower can do a lot of good, and I think that there are also a lot of dangers that can be, uh, realized by our children on facilities that aren't maintained well. So I think that going to have a little bit of money to, uh, go towards, uh, preventing that is a, is definitely a worthwhile cause. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak? Name and address, sir?
James Sullivan, Avondale Road. You know, everybody in the room has to kind of picture where we're talking, it's pretty much right in the center of the town, and a hundred and fifty-foot tower would really look ugly, if you think about it. And, uh, we have to keep in mind where we are. It's a beautiful town, we've been getting hit with the Enfield complex over there, Mayfield. It looks like a, you know, just a huge apartment complex. We have to remember why we live here, and I think a hundred and fifty-foot tower would really be despicable. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Crane? Mr. Crane?
Thank you, Madam Moderator, for your, um, for your patience. At the time that the filing gets made for the per, local permitting, there will be what they call a balloon test. And so there'll be a piece of equipment out there that'll have a balloon in there a hundred and fifty feet. We actually did one two years ago in the first iteration of this process, and I don't think anybody even noticed it. The, the tower itself, um, is going to be what they call a stealth tower, and it's going to basically look like a giant flagpole. And for point of reference, the, the light towers are going to, are, at the football field, they're like, I think seventy-five feet. So, there already are, and the, the tennis court towers, I think, are fifty feet, so there already are fairly significant towers in this location, which is one of the reasons why we thought it was a good spot for a cell tower. But again, it'll look like, mostly like a giant flagpole, and so when you see the balloon test out there, uh, it'll be, the balloon test will be advertised, so check the paper, and, and then you go see it, and I, and I think from the photo studies we've seen, it really is only going to look, you know, fifteen feet taller than the football stadium lights when you're standing on the ground. Because we have the same concerns as you, that, that it fits in with the, uh, character of the community.
Yes, sir.
Michael Calle, four fifty-eight Williams Street. Regarding this, except, is acceptance of this article, uh, limited to the erection of a, uh, cell tower exclusively at, uh, the Blinn Court, uh, location? Or does it authorize erection of cell towers in other areas of the town?
Mr. Crane, do you have that answer?
The, the vote is actually to create a special revenue account, so if the cell tower is permitted and constructed, the revenues go into a, the special revenue account that would then be used for grounds. Uh, the, under state statutes, you need a town meeting vote to create a special revenue account. The, the subject of can, the cell tower lease is, is not a subject for the article.
So the, the question was on the location?
The question is only on the finance, it's a financing mechanism is, is the vote. Not, and not financing, it's where, when and if we collect money from the rental of the, of the, of the space for the cell tower, the vote here, this warrant article, is to create a special revenue account.
Right.
To deposit those proceeds.
So the answer to the question is that by passage of this article?
Excuse me, I must interrupt for an emergency. We will adjourn for about ten minutes. There's an emergency behind you, you cannot see it because you're turning, facing this way. I'd like everyone to please remain in their seats and do not get up unless directed to do so. So, uh, thank you very much for your patience, and I want to, um, extend some appreciation to our paramedics and, and public safety officials for handling that. We, uh, shall re, uh, reconvene, obviously. Mr. Calle, you may return to your, uh, point.
So as I was saying, the, uh, the passage of this article, uh, is not limited to the erection of a cell tower at the, at this location near the Blinn Courts, but its, uh, passage would authorize the erection of cell towers in other areas of town, or just this location?
Mr. Crane?
Again, the vote is not about authorizing the construction of cell towers. The vote is about what happens to the proceeds of the rental of the cell tower when and if it's constructed. The authority to lease the space under the charter is vested in the town manager. And working with the select board, we issued an RFP to, uh, advertise a space for cell tower, and I, I think I want to reiterate, um, it really is a service issue for cell service in the, in the center of the community. But then, we, my recommendation to the board and to town meeting is to set aside the funds from this specific tower into the special revenue account. The funds from the other towers will go into the general, will continue to go into the general fund. The fund, the, the revenue from the rental of this specific tower will go into the special revenue account if this article is approved.
Thank you.
Sir, anyone else who wishes to speak? Name and address, please.
Madam Moderator, Jerry Nollet, Frank Smith Road. I wonder, it seems to me that there are two issues here. In terms of location, uh, should we not hear from the zoning board or the planning board to get, uh, what their understanding is of that location?
Is there someone, um, from the zoning board or the planning board who wishes to speak on this?
If I may?
No, Mr. Crane, you would like to answer that?
Yes, um, an application has not been submitted to either board yet. So the, the.
I did not hear what you said, Steve.
So the, 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 the winning bidder to, to construct the tower, who we signed the lease with, has not submitted their formal application for permitting, so the planning board and zoning board have not seen anything specifically for this site. We've talked about the site, um, at the select board and other locations for some time. Uh, we did issue an RFP two years ago, but in terms of their weighing in on a specific application, they have not yet received one.
So neither the zoning board or the planning board have, uh, made a point of this?
That's correct.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Willie?
I assume they'll receive an application, sure.
Yes, sir.
Larry Stark, eighty-one Williamsburg Drive. I have a question. The question is, why do we need to designate these funds for this particular purpose? I'm not, I would speak over there in favor of, of the article because I'm in favor of the cell tower, but why do we need to designate this money when other money from other resources, from other cell towers are going into the general fund? I have a, I have a concern about dedicating funds for any purpose when that's the purpose of the town meeting annually to determine the budget. So I guess the question is, why do you feel this particular, um, cell tower revenue should be dedicated for a particular purpose? Since money is fungible, that simply means that if for some reason, if it's a thousand dollars, we could simply underfund the budget by a thousand dollars. It doesn't necessarily accomplish much, and I would ask the town manager probably that question.
Mr. Crane?
So I was going to have like a ten-slide PowerPoint for Alonzo's Larry, and I was thinking.
You know how I feel about it.
Yeah, I know how you feel about PowerPoints. No, uh, in all seriousness, the, the reason is, uh, and I think as, as the coach alluded to, um, we know that we need to, um, do a better job on our parks, our fields, our grounds around our buildings. It, it is an area that historically has been under-resourced by virtue of choices made by town meeting, and we wanted to make sure, or not make sure, but the recommendation is to create a dedicated revenue stream to supplement current funding, not to supplant current funding, so we can improve our efforts, uh, on maintaining our fields, our grounds, and our parks. And it, and I think for, and this is a little bit aside, but in public administration currently, uh, the trend really is towards making, if people are, if there's new streams of revenue, people are really fi, trying to find ways to dedicate them to specific purposes so they, that are important to the community, so they know that those things are protected, kind of like the CPA is forested preservation, open space, things like that. This is just kind of a localized version of that.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Then we shall come directly to a vote, this requires a majority vote. Would all those in favor, please raise your green cards? Thank you. Would all those opposed, please raise your green cards? Thank you. The vote passes by majority affirmative vote. Article eleven, Mr. Foster.
I move that the town vote to transfer from the available funds in the treasury, the sum of sixteen thousand five hundred dollars for the purpose of providing supplemental funding to the FY two thousand and eighteen budget for the planning and community development expenses.
Is there a second? The motion's been made and seconded, you may speak to it, Mr. Foster.
The clerical staff employed in the building department has been on, has been out with a long-term illness and has been paid with accrued sick, sick time. The town has utilized a temp agency to fulfill the clerical needs within the office. The appropriation will provide FY two thousand and eighteen funding for the temporary clerical services through December thirty-first, two sol, two thousand and seventeen.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Then we'll come directly to a vote. Would all, this requires a, uh, majority of, vote. Would all those in favor, please raise your green cards? Thank you. Would all those opposed, please raise your green cards? The motion passes by unanimous affirmative vote. Article twelve, Mr. Foster.
I move that the town vote to transfer from the available funds in the treasury, the sum of twenty thousand dollars for the purpose of upgrading the town's valuation software and server.
Is there a second? Motion's been made and seconded, you may speak to it, Mr. Foster.
The town valuation software, Vision, is moving off the Oracle database as sequel. The Oracle database will no longer be supported by Visions at some point in two thousand and twenty. The software upgrade and server are required before this time. Additionally, the FY two thousand and nineteen is the Department of Revenue's revale year where extensive sales analysis is reviewed for prior evaluation of properties within the town. Vision has recommended that the reveal and software slash server upgrade not take place in the same fiscal year.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this?
Larry Stark, eighty-one Williamsburg. It's a very minor issue, but, um, in the, in the description where it says, uh, database moving to SQL, it's actually SQL, which is pronounced very often, sequel, but it's not the word sequel, and that stands for Structured Query Language. So just, as soon as I read that, I said, oh, gee, that's not really true. So it's SQL, pronounced sometimes sequel, but preferably pronounced SQL. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
Anybody else? All right, we'll come directly to a vote, this requires a majority vote, please raise your, please, all those in favor, please raise your green cards? Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your green cards? Thank you. The motion passes by unanimous affirmative vote. Article thirteen, Mr. Foster.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of sixty-four thousand three hundred and ninety-one dollars for the purpose of providing supplemental funding to the FY two thousand and eighteen budget for interest on long-term debt.
Is there a second? Thank you, you may speak to it, Mr. Foster?
In September two thousand and seventeen, the town refinanced its December two thousand and ten, uh, ten bond financing, the Long Middle High School project, and a few smaller water and sewer projects. Over the life of the bond, FY two thousand and nineteen through two thousand, two thousand and forty-one, the town is projected to save three point two six four million dollars, in brackets, two, two point four eight five million in the present value. Semi-ann, semi-annual interest payments were historically made in August and Semi-annual interest payments were historically made in August and February, but the refinancing of the bond now has semi-annual interest payments in December and June. As a result of the change of the interest payment dates, the additional unbudgeted FY 2018 budget is sixty-four thousand three hundred ninety-one dollars in the general fund.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing none, we'll come directly to a vote. This requires a majority vote. Would all those in favor, please raise your green cards? Thank you. Would all those opposed, please raise your green cards? Thank you. The motion passes by unanimous affirmative vote. Article 14, Mr. Foster.
Article 14, I move in terms of the article.
Is there a second? Motion's been made and seconded. You may speak to it, Mr. Foster.
Under the new state law passed July of this year, the town can impose a ban on recreational marijuana sales because the majority of the voters within the town cast a no vote on the legislative ballot question in 2016. The Attorney General has advised that such a ban would be most effective in the form of a general and a zoning bylaw, so both are proposed for the town meeting consideration.
I should note that the planning board is required to issue a report. I invite Mr. Gunnup for that recommendation.
Walter Gunn, 1579 Long Meadow Street. The Long Meadow Planning Board has voted to recommend this article 14 unanimously.
Thank you. This requires a two-thirds vote. If, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll come directly to a vote. Would all those in favor, please raise your green cards? Thank you. Would all those opposed, please raise your green cards? Thank you. The motion passes by declaration, two-thirds, majority vote. Majority affirmative vote, I should say. Article 15, Mr. Foster.
Article 15, I move in terms of the article.
Is there a second? Motion's been made and seconded. You may speak to it.
Under new state law passed July of this year, the town can impose a ban on recreational marijuana sales because of the majority of the voters cast a no vote on the legislation ballot question in 2016. The Attorney General has advised that such a ban would be most effective in the form of a general and zoning bylaws, so both are proposed for the town meeting's consideration.
Thank you. Is there anybody else wishing to speak on this article, on the motion, rather? Seeing none, oh, Mr. Gunn?
Madam Moderator, I just noticed in the warrant, it says here that, I think I read that the report of the planning board is required prior to vote. This is a general bylaw and does not require a planning board vote.
That's correct. It was Article 14 that does, it says in the warrant?
Right, so 15 is the general bylaw.
Right, right. It says in the warrant that it is?
It's in the warrant, yeah. Just wanted to make sure.
Then that's in error.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, this is, Mr. Gunn is correct, and thank you for pointing that out. This require, this particular motion requires a majority vote. Would all those in favor, please raise your green cards? Thank you. Would all those opposed, please raise your green cards? Thank you. The motion passes by majority affirmative vote. Article 16, Ms. Angelides.
I move in terms of the article.
Is there a second? Motion's been made and seconded. You may speak to it.
The proposed addition to the zoning bylaws is a result of Bylaw Working Group. This would create an opportunity to build on existing lots that do not meet current dimensional requirements that are similar in size to the other developed lots nearby.
Thank you, Ms. Angelides. Mr. Gunn, reporting for the planning board?
The planning board has voted unanimously to recommend Article 16.
Thank you. A two-thirds vote is required. Is there anyone wishing to speak to this?
Yes. Madam Moderator, Barry O'Connor, 85 Mill Road. I'm vehemently against this. What we have now is a set of zoning bylaws. They work. If you have an issue with having to build something, and I'm a contractor in town, so I wind up going in front of boards all the time, you go in front of a board and you say, this is what I'm proposing. We are now changing the rules of the game here in town. If you want to see what this is like, take a right over to Lincoln Road where you have houses there that are one-room wide, three stories tall, surrounded by bungalows and capes. If this passes, very, very small pieces of property are going to have houses on them which are not in line with the rest of the neighborhood. It really doesn't make any sense. There are so few pieces of property that this affects that it really isn't a big deal one way or another financially. I really would recommend voting this down. If you happen to, and I have to be honest with you, I lived next to one of those pieces of property. When I bought my house in 1992, there was an attempt to put a piece of property on this house, and the planning board said, no. I'm sorry, the zoning board of appeals said, no, it doesn't meet the criteria. Let's leave well enough alone. When that piece of property came up for sale, I tried to buy it. The owner said, no, I'll wait till town meeting, we can change the rules of the game. And that's what you're doing here. It would be horrible to take a neighborhood of a certain type of house and then stick a house on a piece of property that's literally fifteen feet wide, seventy feet deep, because that's what this would allow. And I highly recommend voting against it. Thank you.
Thank you. Would the person at the green microphone state name and address, please?
My name's Dave Russell. I live at 74 Herbert Street, and I rise to speak in favor of the article. I disagree with my previous speaker. This requires a 5,000 minimum square foot lot, so his 50 by 70 would not be accurate. Moreover, it specifies that the lots be similar to those in the neighborhood. So, you would not have a situation where you have a bunch of large lots with a little sliver lot in the middle. But I really want to speak to it on two other purposes, and just by way of disclosure, I do own one of these lots. It is not buildable under this, these particular proposal, however. First of all, we need diversity of housing. We want people to move into this town who have perhaps not as many resources as other people, who need a smaller house, if you will, a starter house. I used to have those. Many people don't remember them, but we used to have starter houses. We need that kind of property. We need the kind of property where people who are leaving a large house can downsize, literally and figuratively, into a much smaller house, and we have land to do this. My area of town, south of Barrington Road approaching the Connecticut Line, has quite a few. So, I did a bit of research. There are four houses for sale in that area. Median value is around twenty-two hundred dollars, but that's sort of a little flaky figure because of an outlier, so let's call it $200,000. There are five lots that I could identify just by a quick walk around the neighborhood. Those lots are now generating a very small amount of money to the town, probably about $1,500 total. That's based on the value of my lot. But what if we built small, modest homes of around $200,000 valuation on those lots which are currently holding trees and nothing else? In an entire neighborhood in which every single lot is 66,000, 66 by 132, or about 8,700 square feet, we'd have $1 million for those five lots, $1 million more on the tax roll, generating approximately $25,000 a year in tax revenue. That's the kind of development that makes sense for the character of the various neighborhoods, and particularly my own somewhat more modest neighborhood, south of Barrington Road. So, I urge the town to pass this particular amendment. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Carolyn Slus, and I still live at 103 Warren Terrace. I haven't moved. I also tried getting a small lot because it had been grandfathered, oh, maybe a decade or so, in town, and was turned down because all new buildings had to have at least 150-foot frontage. A town that requires that, since then it may have changed, but if a town requires 150-foot frontage or anything extraordinary, it means that all the millennials who would love to live in town, who may have grown up in the town, all the seniors who live in town who might want to downsize in the town, all the young builders who would like to build something in town.
Is there a question?
Well, oh, am I supposed to ask a question?
At that microphone, yes, that's designated for questions. If you're opposed to it, just because there are so many people, okay, thank you.
I now have moved from there to here.
Yep, go ahead.
So, I am fascinated by the small house movement. Maybe some of you have seen it on the internet. It's absolutely fantastic. And all these millennials, these young people who couldn't afford to live in town, who may have been born in town, all the seniors who want to still remain in town without having to go to a senior housing in town, could have this lovely house built on a 50 by 100-foot lot, and there are, I would disagree with the first man who spoke, there are 50 by 100-foot grandfathered lots in town that would be turned down under 150-foot frontage. Last hearing I went to, it seems the senior population in Long Meadow is increasing. I have platinum hair, like Marilyn Monroe. But I will tell you, in order to keep a town vital, you need to have young people moving in. You need to have children being born here who go to the local schools. Now, the only drawback might be, you might say, oh, but then there's going to be more taxes to cover the children increase in the schools. The children belong to all of us, and it will keep the town vital. The only problem is you might have to increase the cemetery plots in size, okay? But I'm all for it, and I hope some of you will consider that, too. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. At the red microphone, name and address, please.
My name's Mark Hauser, 63 Mill Road. I am pretty much against this going through. I moved into this town back in 1988, and I moved into it because of the green space that was available in this town, and the size of the property, and the size of the lots. My current lot is a reasonably sized lot. I don't want to have neighbors right on top of each other. I moved out of Springfield for that reason. If we're going to lessen the standards of the town, which I think this will do, we might as well live in Springfield.
At the yellow microphone, name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Stephen Wallman. I live on Pinewood Drive. I'm looking at Section E, which says the proposed dwelling is or shall be consistent with the architectural style, scale, setbacks, and character of the immediate neighborhood. Who will make that determination if this is passed? It appears to me that once this is passed, somebody who has that sized lot can just go to the building department and get a building permit. Is there going to be a board or committee that's going to check the plans that are to be, and who will submit them, and who will judge, and how big is the committee, and what will the vote necessarily have to be?
Thank you. Mr. Crane?
Yes, in Section 2, it says that the Board of Appeals, the ZBA, the existing zoning Board of Appeals, can issue a special permit for these homes. And I think, so, these criteria, A through E, give some objective means for the ZBA to evaluate these special permit applications. Now, it'll be their subjective judgment of this objective criteria that will determine, they'll make the determination of special permit, but Section E, and I'm glad you pointed that out, is one of the tools in this bylaw, that, this proposed bylaw, that will prevent the homes that he's talking about on Lincoln Road on infill lots. It's really, there used to be a uniformity clause in the zoning bylaws that no longer exists, but this would kind of get us back to that. And that's the intent, is to have it be woven into the existing fabric and character of the neighborhood, not be something that is detrimental.
Follow-up question?
Follow-up question, sure.
Will a decision by the ZBA be appealable or subject to someone going to court to refute the decision if it's negative to the owner? I have no axe to grind in this. I don't own any vacant lots in town.
We've got the town council to address that question.
Yes, and a butter, another interested party would be able to under Section 17 of the zoning act.
I didn't quite hear you.
An appeal can be, could be taken under Section 17 of the zoning act.
At the red microphone.
I'm in Ray, 19 Longfellow. It's my understanding that there's close to 100 of these lots in town. Just having formerly been on the school committee for a large period of time, it's nice to think that it might be all senior housing or millennials without children coming in, but there's also the very good possibility that it's going to be young couples with three, four children, an influx of 300 to 400 children into our school system. And unless something's changed that I don't know about with the size of our schools and our facilities, the budgets that are happening in town, we cannot afford that type of influx of children into this town. The other thing is, from an economic perspective, as the supply goes up, the demand goes down for the rest of our houses. A lot of us have worked a long time to build up equity in these houses, and that is our retirement, the equity we have in our houses and what we've been working for. And I think the supply, as it raised up, would just hurt the rest of the town with those values. So, for those two reasons, I'd be opposed to this.
At the yellow microphone, you were next, and then we'll go to the green microphone.
Lynn Hauser, 63 Mill Road. I have a question. On my street, a house was sold years ago, and they subdivided the house. It had a very large piece of frontage. They subdivided the house, and now there is a piece of land that in the past has been unbuildable. It will now have more than 50 square feet, 50 feet of frontage, so therefore by this it would be buildable, less than 5,000 square feet, more than 5,000 square feet. What is to stop people in Long Meadow who have a very large frontage on their home to do the same thing in the future, which would make way more than 100 available plots? It could double, triple, quadruple that.
Okay, to get, answer your question, Mr. Crane?
The proposed bylaw specifies that it's only existing lots today, and so when we, when the Attorney General approves the bylaw, it would be, you know, that would be the end date.
Do you have a number of lots?
Follow-up question?
Yeah.
Mr. Crane?
Yes, so, the, based on just a kind of data run by the assessor, it's 141, but I haven't gone, driven around, looked at all of them, but I'm going to guess that a substantial number of them are not buildable for other reasons. And so, I don't really think that we have a tremendous exposure to large, you know, game-changing class sizes and things like that. The intent is really to have some options and some flexibility in the bylaws for vacant lots that may be troublesome in certain neighborhoods. Maybe people don't cut the grass, or maybe they collect trash because it's just a vacant lot and they don't live next door, and maybe that could be turned into a revenue-generating property or housing opportunity for someone. That's really what, this came, when I proposed this, it was because we've had, we have some lots that are blights on the neighborhood because they're vacant and uneconomic, and sometimes owners just don't take good care of them.
Mr. Gunn from the planning board, did you want to address that question?
Yeah, to address your question about people who have, say, 190, 200 feet of frontage today, you can't do that. You can't subdivide your property without creating a buildable lot, which is 125 feet in Zone A1 and 150 feet in Zone A2. That was created under the Subdivision Control Act. That's called ANR, which is Approval Not Required. If you were going to create something different, you'd have to actually create a subdivision, and trust me, that is very difficult to do. What this is doing is really addressing grandfathered lots, lots that are existing today. And if I could segue quickly into a little history here, Mr. Connor spoke earlier at the red microphone. Mr. Connor, in 2006, actually had a citizen petition, and he struck this uniformity clause, okay? So, previous to that, the uniformity clause was really simple. All it said was that the ZBA at its discretion could issue a permit for someone to build on a otherwise non-buildable lot. So, we struck that down. I think as a result, he mentioned Lincoln Road. These two strange houses actually are a result of us striking that uniformity law because they were able to use state law to usurp our town law. This, with home rule, as I call it, would actually give us as a town more control over the lots today that exist. And I think the way the town has put in the language, such as being consistent with architectural style or not, actually gives more guidance to the zoning board of appeals than the pre- actually gives more guidance to the zoning Board of Appeals than the previous uniformity law did back in, when it was struck in 2006. So, that's just a little history.
Having looked up the state laws, though.
I'm sorry. You've asked two questions. We've got other speakers who wish to speak.
Thank you.
Sir, at the green microphone.
Hi, good evening. Jonathan David, 30 Lorenz Street. I'm here to support this motion. We are one of the grandfathered lots. We bought our house in '83. It was listed on the original subdivision along Meadow as two lot numbers. The first week that we had moved into town, we had offers to buy the lot. We, I grew up here in town. At some point in the late '90s, these lots were combined on our property card. Then the zoning laws were changed with the minimum frontage, and our lot became unbuildable. Our land and our property, it's two lots, each are 60 by 100 to 120 by 100. It's very similar to every single house up and down from pretty much Laurel Street down to Long Meadow Street. Our land is currently valued at $148,000, which means my lawn is worth about 75 grand. I can't build on it. I can't fence it because it's a corner lot. I can't put a garage on it. So, I think there's, there was a, this motion was really well thought out. There was a working group that involved all the major building people and departments in town. It has the support of the Planning Board. It has restrictions. It puts the control of the special permit process back in the hands of the ZBA. It offers a lot of local control. There's a 60% threshold within 300 feet, which means you can't put a 50-foot lot on Argely. You can't put it in a neighborhood that it doesn't fit in. There's a lot of great language written in this, and it's also designed to increase our tax revenue. I don't like the paying the $1,800 or so that I have to pay a year for my lawn. However, the town could be getting six, seven, eight grand for that. If this motion passes, we'd build a house there as soon as we could and help contribute to the community. I think it's a really well-written law. It protects a butters. The special permit process requires that all the butters be notified in writing. It's open meaning laws. You have a say, and you have an appeals process. So, I think it's really well thought out. It's supported by the appropriate departments here in town and all the people who hear these appeals, and I think we should support it. Thank you.
Thank you. At the red microphone.
What's that?
Name and address.
Tom Lucusa, 1651 Long Meadow Street. And, yeah, a friend of mine talked me into moving into Long Meadow versus a place like Wilbraham because there are a lot of small houses for, if you have children that would ever move in town, they could afford to live here. I guess the reason I want to share this story is because I live next door to a home that was built in the 1840s, and a contractor bought the property and complained to the Planning Board that the ceilings were too low and that he really needed to tear it down. And he wanted to tear it down and then build two other additional houses in the backyard. And so, because the home wasn't in a historical district, it really had no protections. And so, I think that's the only thing I wanted to share, is that there are some properties here that may have historical homes on them that could be vulnerable to being built on in a way that we wouldn't expect them to be in that neighborhood. I did have some, you know, I was glad the Planning Board, the zoning appeals folks talked about existing lots, but some of these older properties have, are made up of several lots already. So, we don't really know where houses could go up, especially around historic properties. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Name and address, please.
Brian David Crawford, 5 Unis Drive. I have a question about 2B. The lot is or shall be serviced by both Long Meadow Public Water and Public Sanitary Sewer. Is there a reason particularly we are singling out the houses and properties on the northern edge of the town which are serviced by Springfield Water and Sewer?
Mr. Crane, can you answer that?
I think the big thing there is to avoid septic systems, to make sure they have sanitary sewer and water. And you're right, we, actually, there are only a small number of houses, properties, that are served by Springfield.
I'm one of them.
Right. But I think it's a small number, and I didn't cross-reference that list. Was it 14 or 15 accounts, Pete? More than that? Yeah, so, there's a dozen, maybe less than a dozen accounts that fit that description. And I didn't cross-reference the 141 lists of parcels with those accounts, but it may not be a factor. I think the biggest thing is make sure they have water service and sewer service, so they can build a home with sanitary.
Would you be--
Follow-up question?
Follow-up. Would you be amenable to amending this to strike the word "Long Meadow" from the statement, to allow my neighbors who fall into this situation, if they choose to, follow the process?
Uh--
And just so we're clear, my house is not one.
Right.
I feel sorry for our friend who bays a $74,000 lawn. My front lawn is in Springfield. I paid $24 zero to the down for that.
I, if you're asking me my personal opinion as town planner, I think that I'd want to do more research before I would say that, I mean, the other thing is, we are in the water and sewer business, so we want to create utility customers for ourselves as well. But I would have to defer to the Planning Board and the ZBA at a future, I think it's worth a discussion at a future meeting, but I wouldn't be able to recommend one way or the other.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Yes, sir.
If I may, First Madam Moderator, I accept an apology from the head of the Planning Board because I've never been talking on any other topic like this in 1992 or any other time. So, it wasn't me. My name's Barry O'Connor. I don't know who it was you spoke to or who you thought was here. Maybe my face is very familiar to you. But in any event, the issue here is that there are parcels of property in Long Meadow that have a very short frontage but are very deep. And that comes from the fact that we have dingles in many parts of the town. So, those pieces of property are the ones that are concerning to me because you could literally, by meeting the criteria, put a house up that's one-room wide, very, very long, and three stories tall, in a neighborhood that is not consistent with that type of building. There are homes in this town that are relatively inexpensive. There are homes that are very expensive. But I don't think that we should use that as a reason to change what has been our bylaws for years. It makes sense. It's one of the reasons. I moved to this town because it doesn't have choppiness like where I come from in Boston. You go to Lexington, you see houses just shoehorned into these little spaces because contractors will do that because that's their job. And people will buy the house because they want to move to this town. But it certainly affects other people that live in that neighborhood. Thank you.
Let me address the issue of the naming. I was in error for allowing a speaker to use another person's name. That's typically not our tradition. But since the speaker who uttered the name was referring to what he believed to be a citizen petition action, I did not say anything at the time. And so, if there is any blame, Mr. O'Connor, I accept that blame, and I apologize to you. Sir, at the green microphone.
Tim Casey, 741 Laurel Street. Just to speak to your concern, Tom, about any historical homes, any homes built before, as a member of the Historical Commission, any homes built before 1901 are subject to a nine-month demolition delay law and then have an opportunity for public comment. So, I do appreciate that there is a concern for preserving the wonderful historic nature of our town, but we do have a mechanism for dealing with that to prevent something like what the contractor was proposing next door to you from occurring.
Is there anyone wishing to speak further? Then we shall come directly to a vote. This requires a two-thirds majority. Would all those in favor, please raise your green cards? Thank you. Would all those opposed, please raise your green cards? The chair is in doubt. We shall go to a hand count. Kindly stay in your seats. I ask for the tellers to spring into action. You're not springing. All right, so the way this will work is we will have our tellers, who are designated in each section, to count each row by row, kindly follow their directions. They will ask for the first row to raise their hands, raise the cards. Please raise them nice and high so that they can see them. They will come to an agreement on the number of people in each section, and then they will ask for the next row. So, please direct your attention to the tellers who are in your section. You may, all those, for those of you, the tellers will tell you when to raise your cards. We are only voting the yeses now. Yes, do you have this whole? No, 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 only counting yeses first. You are not counting no's. Only the yeses first. Once the yes votes have been counted and subtotaled, I will ask the tellers to report them at the microphone.
For the yes votes, we have four.
Four in which section, please? And so, tellers, say the section that you have. Thank you.
Yes, we have five yes votes.
In what section, please?
House, front right floor.
House rear right, 13.
House rear left, 13.
Rear left bleacher, zero.
The front left bleacher and the select board, 13 yes.
Just to be clear, you're referring to the whole platform in front, right?
Yes, yep.
Thank you.
Right front bleacher, four.
Say that again, please.
Right front bleacher, four.
Thank you.
Rear right bleacher, yes, 11.
All right, now you may count the no votes. Yes, count the no votes, please.
Madam Moderator, it may not make a difference, but we already had a count for no votes here that occurred.
I'm sorry. It must, this must--
That's fine. I just want to point out, they already counted them. You want them to count them again?
Yes.
Thank you.
House floor front left has five no votes.
House front right floor has three no votes.
The front left bleacher and the whole, all the boards, total of six no votes.
House rear left, 12.
Rear left bleacher, four.
The total vote was yes, 63; no, 59. The motion fails by majority, I'm sorry, but not by two-thirds. Article 17. And by the way, thank you to our counters. I appreciate that.
I move in terms of the article.
Is there a second? Motion's been made and seconded. You may speak to it, Ms. Angelides.
This change is also being proposed by the bylaw working group. In certain cases, a resident cannot install a pool in the rear yard because of the lot's irregular shape. This would reduce the required setback from the side lot line from 30 to 15 feet and the setback from the dwelling at 10 feet, a report of the Planning Board.
Mr. Gunn?
The Planning Board voted unanimously to recommend Article 17.
Is there anyone who wishes to speak on it? This requires a two-thirds majority vote. Would all those in favor, please raise your green cards? Thank you. Would all those opposed, please raise your green cards? I want to do this one more time. All those in favor, raise your green cards. Thank you. All those opposed, raise your green cards. Passes by majority, affirmative vote, two-thirds declaration. Two-thirds majority, affirmative declaration, yeah. Article 18, Ms. Angelides.
I move in terms of the article.
Has it been, sorry. Is there a second? Thank you. You may speak to it.
This bylaw was also developed by the bylaw working group to address window signs that are commonly used on storefronts but not defined in the current bylaws. A report from the Planning Board.
Mr. Gunn?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. The Planning Board voted unanimously to-- The planning board voted unanimously to recommend article 18.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this? Then we'll come directly to a vote. This requires a two-thirds majority vote. Would all those in favor, please raise your green cards? Thank you. Would all those opposed, please raise your green cards? Motion passes unanimous affirmative vote. Declaration, two-thirds majority. Article 19, Ms. Angelides.
I move in terms of the article.
Is there a second? You may speak to it, Ms. Angelides.
The town meeting had approved the transfer of these funds for the purpose into a special revenue fund within article number 30 at the May 10, 2017 annual town meeting. The funds were originally received by the town of Long Meadow as part of the MGM Surrounding Communities Award. The Department of Revenue determined the transfer funds did not meet statutory criteria and thus closed the available amount of $755,800 into the town's undesignated fund balance, ultimately becoming a part of the town's FY 2018 certified free cash. This transfer will ensure that the funds are set aside for the purposes outlined in the Surrounding Communities Award.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this? Then we'll come directly to a vote. This requires a majority vote. Would all those in favor, please raise your green cards? Thank you. Would all those opposed, please raise your green cards? Thank you. The motion passes by majority affirmative vote. A motion to dissolve the special town meeting is now in order. Is there a second? All in favor, please raise your green cards. Thank you. All opposed, please raise your green cards. The motion passes unanimous affirmative vote. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.